Students, staff and public. And first up is...oh, first, I'm sorry. I would like to start with a moment of silence. Because last week we lost a treasured friend, colleague, and true public servant. For more than 30 years, Arlene Bush sat at this table as a school board member, becoming one of the longest-serving in Minnesota history. Sadly, Arlene passed away Sunday, May 17th, at the age of 83. Arlene was the district's greatest cheerleader and strongest advocate for Bloomington students. Even before her time on the board, Arlene was volunteering in our schools and attending school events and activities while her six daughters went through the system. That commitment never waned. She became a fixture at school athletic events, plays, musicals, concerts, book fairs, assemblies, and ceremonies which celebrated the achievements of our students and our staff. Arlene Bush will forever be remembered not for the countless hours of service, but in the generations of students whose lives were enriched by her commitment to education. So tonight, we remember Arlene Bush and extend our gratitude for a life well-lived in the service of others. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask for a motion regarding canceling the study session that was scheduled for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. That brings us to the district-wide Food Drive 2015 results. And I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Rick...Mr. Aliva.
Hello and welcome. As the Chair of the School Board Youth Advisory Council, it's my pleasure to extend our sincere gratitude to the students, parents, staff, and all those who participated in our seventh annual district-wide Food Drive. This annual event is organized and led by the PTSA Council and our Youth Advisory Council. This year, our schools, departments, and eight business partners collected over 13,400 pounds of non-perishable foods and $7,950 in cash, bringing our seven-year total to 267,400 pounds of food. You can clap for that. All donations go to help our friends at the Bloomington-based Veep, who serve over 7,700 people each month, half of which are children. So, once again. So that's the end of my prepared remarks. I'm going to go off script for just a minute here. So just so you know, the following may not be the views of our fellow board members or administration. As we come to the end of another academic school year, you may be saying to yourself, "Yeah, the Food Drive is great, but it's collecting food, the job of the school. Shouldn't my kids be learning reading, writing, arithmetic?" And the local paper prints its ranking of schools based on standardized test scores, which our students have just finished taking. And legislators argue over whether or not teachers should be hired or fired based on their students' who may or may not speak English, ability to achieve proficiency on those tests. We sometimes forget what is important in life. See, I believe the goal of school is to prepare students for life after school. And yes, of course, reading and math are important, but where's the checkbox for "my teacher inspired me to be a better person? My teacher believed in me when I didn't believe in myself? Other kids sit with me at lunch, so I don't have to eat by myself?" Curriculum is more than a weekly lesson plan. It is our entire life experience, and what many of our students experience is hunger. Veep plays an important role in helping those students. The Food Drive gives our entire community an opportunity to help Veep achieve its mission. And through the experience, our students learn valuable life lessons that cannot be measured on a standardized test. So my answer is yes, it is our job, and I'm proud to be a part of it. It is now my pleasure to welcome representatives from Veep and the PTSA Council to say a few words and to present school awards for the most collections.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. I'm Pamela Page. I work with Veep. And on behalf of Veep, on behalf of the Board of Directors, on behalf of the 1,700 volunteers that operate the organization, on behalf of the over 18,000 clients that come every day, I want to say thank you to school district, the Bloomington School District, District 271, for an amazing Food Drive. Rick gave you the stats. This equals 53,168 pounds that have come to the food shelf. But I'm going to give you a picture of what that looks like. We go through 10,000 pounds of food that goes out to 130 to 170 families a day. That means that the Bloomington School District outfitted Veep for approximately one week to serve over 900 families with a seven-to-10-day supply of food. That is significant. That's amazing. And also, what I would like to do is thank the Bloomington Schools for recognizing that this drive is important in informing families that Veep exists, that there's a place for families to go during the summer if they face food insecurity. Veep will be providing 700 children with breakfast and lunch items throughout the course of the summer to make up where the free and reduced lunch program is out for the summer. And so I just want to say thank you for the organizational efforts of Rick Kaufman and Kate Martin, the support of Depp Bunkholdt, and our Superintendent Les Fujitaki, to President Karen Cook, and the entire PTSA Council, to Rick and the Student Advisory Council, to the administration, the teachers, and the staff, so many of whom I see standing in this room. This would not be possible without your creative thinking and your encouragement to the students to come up with ideas to inspire others to give, to the families, to the students who supported Veep in this effort. And our hats off to Olson Elementary, to Ridgeview Elementary in Oak Grove. Your efforts are significant, and thank you so much for being a shining light, an example to other students and to people to get behind helping their neighbors in need.
Good evening. My name is Karen Cook. I'm president of this year's PTSA Council. On behalf of the Council, we're pleased to have been part of the leadership effort for this year's district-wide Food Drive. This is our seventh year. I'd like to thank all the parent leaders of the PTSA Council for getting the word out and working with all our wonderful school staff and students to make sure this Food Drive was a tremendous success. Now, I'd like to recognize two schools for their outstanding efforts. For the second consecutive year, Ridgeview Elementary has collected the most total pounds of food, 2,419 pounds. So they're going to earn a special certificate of achievement. So I don't think Steve Abrahamson's here. I know, I have other people. I'd like to invite PTSA Council Rep. Jennifer Aliva and some of the students we have from Ridgeview Elementary to accept this award.
So I'm Jennifer Shannon, and I'm one of the teachers at Ridgeview. And this is Mr. Greg Wammer. He is also one of the teachers. And this year, when we talked about doing our Food Drive, we kind of just guide the kids, and they come up with all the ideas. And so we have five young students here who want to talk to you and tell you what the Food Drive meant to them and to our school.
Hello and welcome to our special Food Drive speech. I'm Hadley Zozel.
I'm Kenna Jones.
Janine Magua.
Ethan Moore.
And Abby O'Keefe.
This evening, we will be talking about what we learned from leading our school in the Food Drive. We had to work together as a team to accomplish our goals, and we also had to communicate with the whole school so everyone would know how to help out. We had to have leadership to achieve our goals. Leadership is taking control of the situation. We helped the community by raising 2,419 pounds of food during the Veep Food Drive. But all together, including the money and the pounds, we earned, we collected 7,234
Our goal was to beat last year's collections of 2,308 pounds of food and money. We sure beat that this year. The goal is, we have to have a common goal, too. The goal is something to strive for, so we all have something to work for and something to want when we bring this food in.
If we worked together, we can accomplish anything.
Each year, the school that collects the most combined food and cash is awarded the We Believe Alliance World Record Food Drive Traveling Trophy. Last year's winner was Jefferson High School. So with nearly 15,300 pounds of food and cash collected, this year's recipient of the World Record Food Drive Trophy is Olson Elementary. So accepting this trophy on behalf of the school is Principal Paul Meyer.
Thank you. This is a very kind gesture of recognition for the kids. I don't know if I can do justice to what the people did prior to me with the little people making sure that they explained it all, but real quick, I'm our leader of student council, and what we did is we had a good time where the kids came up with certain days that they celebrated. And then, like, one day was pajama day, and that day they brought all kinds of goods that were dealing with getting ready for bed, like toothpaste and things like that. So we did that kind of theme, and the most popular one was Friday Hat Day. If you brought a hat, you could, if you brought a hat, if you brought a dollar, you could wear a hat that day, and they loved it. And then we had the student council reps, the officers go on the news the day prior of explaining what was coming up. So that was huge. And the thing that was so fun to watch is how excited the kids got. And the thing that was really impressive is, we did that without having a building partner with another, like, company outside or partner with the business. So it was all brought from the children, and their hearts were just, it was a wonderful effort, and I was very proud to be a part of that. And like Mr. Aliva said, it does teach kids a great deal about life. And like I've said before many times, it takes a village to raise a child, and having us all work together, this is a final product that came to benefit many children and families. So thank you, and have a good night.
So I just also want to say thank you very much to the businesses that helped us out for the Food Drive, and on behalf of the PTSA Council, thank you very much.
Before Karen gets away, I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation to her for her service as the PTSA Council President this year. Thank you. Next up, I'd like to call upon our Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox to introduce Tim Chivari, the MASSP Hennepin Division Assistant Principal of the Year.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Tonight, I am pleased to have the opportunity to recognize Mr. Tim Chivari, Assistant Principal at Oak Grove Middle School. We invited him here this evening because the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals recently named him the Assistant Principal of the Year for Hennepin County. Brian Engeman, who is Tim's supervisor and principal at Oak Grove Middle School, was not able to be with us this evening, but he did want to share the following testimony regarding Tim's work at Oak Grove. Brian said...and Tim, come up here. I mean, you get to... Brian says, "Tim has helped create an environment where stakeholder input is highly valued and used to create systems of support for all students. Tim takes the approach that we must support all students and looks for ways to help each student find success and achieve at high levels." Brian continued to say that Tim is a highly valued member of Oak Grove Middle School and is respected by the students, staff, and parents alike. He is a genuine, reliable, and trustworthy leader who maintains a focus on doing the right thing for students and staff. Tim's service to others, his ability to listen, and openness to new ideas and perspectives have made him an outstanding assistant principal and clearly deserving of this MASSP award. Tim, congratulations. We're very proud of you.
So that's, Brian said all that?
Yeah.
I hope he puts that in my evaluation. No, so, you know, thank you, Chris. Thank you, school board members, for this recognition. It's, you know, it's an honor, and I'm humbled by this. As I've reflected on this, I've thought, the most important thing for me about this, I think, is that I work with such a great group of people at Oak Grove. I've been fortunate to be part of this district for 14 years, and if I've learned one thing, of course, in that time, it's that we don't do anything alone. And we have very dedicated, hard-working teachers who work daily to ensure that our kids get the very best of what they need. And I believe that I work with the best of those teachers, many of whom are here tonight. And so I thank them for all of the work that they do. And I, you know, I really need to share this recognition with them because the good things, the great things that we do truly are a collaborative effort.
And I'll invite our Assistant Superintendent to introduce the new principals.
Continue. So thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to introduce three new elementary principals. I will give some brief background about each of them, and then allow them to share a bit more information about themselves and how they're feeling about joining the Bloomington administrative team. First, I am pleased to introduce Mr. Roberto Cantu. Come on up, Roberto. Roberto is currently serving as the interim principal at Poplar Bridge, and now will be taking over that role on a permanent basis. Prior to moving into the role of principal, Roberto was a teacher, the dean of students, an assistant principal at Valley View Elementary School. He has also served as the district's summer school principal and has taught in both the Minneapolis and St. Paul public schools. It is my pleasure to introduce to you this evening, Mr. Roberto Cantu, the new principal at Poplar Bridge Elementary.
Thank you. As the Assistant Superintendent said, I've kind of grown up here in Bloomington, and it's been wonderful to not only be a teacher in the district, but then to see the process as I've moved up into administration. And it's, I look forward to this wonderful opportunity. Kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Chivari said, it's the teachers that make us who we are. And I'm fortunate to have a very resilient staff that is dedicated to what they do, and I look forward to our future. So thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kelvin Keisling. So Kelvin, if you'd please come up to the podium. Stand close. Kelvin will be replacing Paul Shulow as the principal at Hillcrest Community School. Kelvin is currently serving as the arts content lead for the Minneapolis Public Schools. He oversees all fine arts education, exploration, extension programming, and was directly involved in the strategic planning and redesign of the Minneapolis arts model. Kelvin has also had experience in St. Paul and Roseville area schools, where he served in a variety of roles, which included an instructional coach, an administrative intern, an EL teacher, a choir teacher, and a music teacher. Kelvin's unique background and skills make him an excellent fit for the Hillcrest Artful Learning Program, and we're very excited to add him to our team here in Bloomington. Please congratulate Mr. Kelvin Keisling, the new principal.
Good evening. I'm humbled and honored to be here and to be the new principal for Hillcrest Community School. It's incredibly exciting. I love the arts. I love the community in Bloomington. I love the community around Hillcrest School, and I can't wait to get started. So thank you very much.
And finally, I'd like to introduce Ms. Corey Thompson. So Corey, if you'd come up and join me. Corey will be serving as the interim principal at Valley View Elementary School next year. She is filling that position behind Andy Kubis, who is moving into the position of Executive Director of Learning Supports. Corey was a social studies teacher for eight years before moving into the role of dean of students at Valley View Middle School. Following that, Corey was asked and accepted the job of assistant principal at Valley View Elementary when Roberto Cantu took the interim job at Poplar Bridge. Corey has done an excellent job as an assistant principal, and we are excited to have her move into the role of interim principal at Valley View Elementary next year. So please welcome Ms. Corey Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. I am excited about the opportunity to lead dedicated staff at VVE to serve our families and students. Like Roberto said, I grew up here, so I'm just excited to have the opportunity to be in a leadership role.
Okay. Now I'll turn it over to the superintendent, who would like to introduce some of his new administrative staff.
Madam Chair, board members, and everyone else, thank you for being here. Call up Camera Steve. Ms. Steve is currently our leader of our Metro South Adult Basic Education Program. She's been with our district for nine years, and she's accepted the new position to be our new executive director of community services. Ms. Steve has been with the Richfield and Hopkins School District as a teacher and as an administrator. She has her degree from St. Mary's, a master's degree, and she's earned us the following recognitions. She has earned the 2009 Minnesota Community Education Association Educator of the Year Award, the 2011 Minnesota ABE Leader of the Year Award, and the 2013 Minnesota ABE Program Excellence Award. She also has her principal license for K-12, and she's done an amazing job leading our district in the areas of adult basic education, and we look forward to her leadership now in our community services program. Please join me in congratulating Camera Steve.
Well, first I have to say, I did not earn any of that. I, like many of my colleagues before me, understand that it is a collaborative effort, and it takes a team. And our teachers, our support staff, our front office staff are what make our programs, what meet the needs of our program students and families. So I have been so lucky to be a part of Bloomington Public Schools and be a part of earning these awards, but better yet, providing services and opportunity for our students and their next steps, and some very individual goals. So that's been exciting for me to be a part of, and now I just, I'm honored by the opportunity. I thank you for the confidence in giving me this new role and serving the community in a different capacity and working with a brand-new team, but I know lots of talented people. So thank you very much.
I'll call Mr. Melby to join me. As he walks up here, Mr. Melby is currently our executive director of student services. Now, on July 1st, he will become our new assistant superintendent. Mr. Melby, like Tamara, has been with us for nine years total, and he was previously at the, he was the director of, I need to get it right... Carver Scott...Educational Cooperative. Thank you. Eric Melby has his master's degree and his education specialist license from the University of St. Thomas, and he is working and is nearing completion of his doctorate and his superintendent license. Again, Mr. Melby has served our district very well, and he is well-deserving of this promotion. I look forward to working with him. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Melby.
Thank you, Les, and school board members. Bloomington Schools and I, as Superintendent Fujitaki mentioned, have a long history, at least in my lifetime, with me in leadership opportunities, and for that, I am extremely grateful. As mentioned, in 2003, I was hired to be a special education supervisor and given the opportunity to work under the direction of Pat Garrity. What an experience. Learned a ton. Then I left for a brief sojourn just to get even more seasoned, and came back in 2010 to replace Pat Garrity as the executive director of student services. And again, the opportunities for me to learn and serve in Bloomington have been immeasurable. Now, as I stand here tonight, I want to thank you again for another leadership opportunity. I'm honored and excited for the opportunity to serve as Bloomington's assistant superintendent. I also want to publicly state that there's no place on earth, literally, maybe Hawaii, I don't know, but literally on earth, that I would rather do this work than right here in Bloomington. I believe we do have the best staff, as everybody's mentioned earlier tonight, teachers, paras, clerical, custodial, transportation folks, health associates, equity staff, engagement staff, administrators, kitchen staff, anybody else I may have neglected to mention. I mean it, the best. We have the best families, and by that I mean families who are deeply caring about their kids and their education and about this school district. We have the best community partners who we work with. They value what we're doing here. They want to stand with us and support us, and of course, we have the best students. I truly believe that. I look forward to working collaboratively with all of you. Finally, as a northern Minnesotan of Scandinavian descent, it may be hard for you to tell. I'm very excited about this opportunity. This is how it looks when I get really excited, so just for future reference. And again, thank you.
Hope all of you noticed that we like to promote from within, give people a chance, but we also bring an outside talent, too, when needed. I'd like to inform you that Principal Kubis sends his regrets and apologies for not being able to be here tonight. He had an urgent family matter he had to tend to in Canada. Mr. Kubis will be our new executive of learning supports. He's going to take the role of currently filled by Eric Melby. Mr. Kubis has his, and I need to get this right again, has his master's degree from Winona State University, and he also has educational specialist degree. He has been our principal at Valley View Middle School and Valley View Elementary School. He has served the district for over 20 years in various capacities, including being a teacher, a dean of students, an assistant principal, and a principal. I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Kubis. He's going to bring a lot of perspectives from the schools to the central office. So we look forward to working with him, and I'm going to ask Principal Corey Thompson to come up and say a few words for him.
Well, on behalf of Mr. Kubis, he asked me to say a few words for him. He said, "Sorry, he could not make it." He had to fly home to deal with his ailing grandmother, who was very important to him. And he said he was very excited about the next opportunity and looks forward to future interactions with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call upon Sue Pearson. Is she in the group here? Or Wendy? Wendy Marchak's going to introduce this year's award recipient of the Bloomington Federation of Teachers, Gary Seamer's exemplary educator award.
Chair Bartolata, school board members, cabinet members, members in our audience and our listening audience at home. Taking the place of Sue Pearson tonight, she wasn't feeling well. She was last year's Gary Seamer's Award winner, and that is the tradition to pass it on to this year's. So I'm going to introduce this year's winner. Aaron Pinsky is a physics teacher at Kennedy High School. He has been in a leadership position in the BFT for about seven years, serving as both a building steward for Kennedy and also our member rights advocate. He's the one that knows all the stuff, is what we say. What was really fun about this nomination is that it came from the teachers at Kennedy. The letters that they wrote and expressing how much they enjoy working with Aaron, how he is very thoughtful, he thinks things through, analyzes, tries to take the emotion out, and just work with members and give them their options. And they're very appreciative of that. Here's something that one of his teacher friends wrote. "In his capacity as building steward, he serves as member rights advocates and is tirelessly in the attention he gives to the members who need his services. He knows the contract, and he knows the..." He knows the contract, and he knows the rules. He is not afraid to speak his mind and always does so in a tactful and informed manner. This is the fourth school that I have worked at in my career, and I have never seen someone so committed to the union." So at this time, I'd like to introduce Erin Pinsky, Gary Seamer's Award winner.
Thank you, Wendy. I just want to say, it's not difficult to find someone who recognizes the importance of teaching and of teachers. I think most people you meet think it's an important job. It's a little more rare to encounter someone who recognizes the importance of strengthening the teaching profession, and it's my privilege to work with a lot of people who understand that, and I value their opinion especially, and I'm very pleased to accept this award. Thank you.
That brings us to public recognition. At this time, we've had some people call in that would like to speak before the board, and I'd like to invite Wendy Marchek, BFT President, to come back to the podium.
Chair Bartolata, we have a person in the community that wanted to speak, so is it okay if I give my turn up to her? She's asked to speak.
Regarding the same...all right, go ahead. Could you state your name, please?
Sheila O'Gren.
All right, you are on the list to speak.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I bring some papers over to you to start out with?
Sure.
I don't know how many are there already, but you can just pass these around. Some of you already know who I am. This letter that's being passed around is from my daughter. While you're passing around, you can read it freely, but my daughter's been overlooked. She's a blessing to me. I was never supposed to have kids. She's fought through everything through her life, and when she was four, she had a craniotomy. And if you don't know what that is, it's a blood clot under the skull, and they had to go in. I almost lost her. At six, they had to go back in, and they had to take the screws and bolts out. She's not supposed to be under any stress whatsoever, and what is going on at this time is completely stressing her out, and the people that I've talked to so far have said, "It's all about the numbers." But I ask you, isn't it supposed to be about the kids? That's what you're all here for, handing out awards, patting everybody on the back. I'm not trying to be rude, but it's about the children, not about the numbers. The letter from my daughter says...you'll have to excuse me, I'm high anxiety, and I don't have my glasses. "Dear School Board Members, my name is Serenity Pratt. I was so happy when I was told early on, the beginning of the year, that I would be able to go to school with all my friends at Olson Middle School. Then a letter comes towards the end of the school year saying, 'I could not go there.' They said that I had to go to Valley View Middle School. I got really stressed and started having blackouts. It's on my mind all the time. I feel my...I don't feel like myself at times. I don't think it's fair that all my friends are able to go to Olson Middle School, and I have to go to Valley View Middle School. Not knowing anybody, I don't want to be lonely or a loner. Can you please look at everything to help me be able to go to Olson Middle School, as promised early on, to be with my friends? Thank you."
Got two more letters. This one, let me pass around.
This is from her grandparents. "To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter to you regarding my granddaughter, Serenity Pratt, in hope..." I can't even speak tonight. "...in hopes you will consider letting my granddaughter attend Olson Middle School because all of the problems this has caused. It is very sad when you are told she can't attend a school because...can't attend a school because it's all about the numbers. When did it become about the numbers over the child's well-being? I personally have noticed a change in my granddaughter since all this has come about, and not a good change. The undue stress this has put on my granddaughter comes...concerns me very much, and I feel helpless to help her. You have the power to change this and help my granddaughter so these added medical issues can be resolved. I am asking you to please review and allow her to go to Olson Middle School so the medical issues do not get any worse for her. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Jamie Jo O'Gren." This last letter is from her doctor, actually, many doctors. My daughter goes to Southdale Pediatrics. Her doctor is Dr. Cook. He says, "To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter in support of my patient, Serenity Pratt. Serenity Pratt has been having medical issues around the transition to middle school, specifically the upcoming transition to Valley View Middle School. She's been having blackout episodes related to the stress and has undergone evaluation by pediatric neurologists. She has been recommended that she work with other services, including psychology, to help with this transition. I ask that you consider these facts in relation to an exception, which would allow her to attend Olson Middle School, as her family had reportedly been previously told by school officials. My daughter, since she has been told cannot go to Olson Middle School because it has to do with the numbers, has had five blackouts, has had to go in for an MRI, has had to go into a CAT scan. She now is under physical therapy because of the fact that when she had a craniotomy, she's not supposed to be under stress. When you get under stress, you have all the tension, everything built up here, which is creating the blackouts, and that's why they're having her under physical therapy. She's now going to have to go into counseling to help with that as well. This is one issue after another. My daughter has wonderful grades. She looks at everybody like they're a wonderful person. She's not mean to anyone. She's always there for everyone. For someone like that, whose grades mean everything, a bookworm, and for you to knock her feet out from under her...the biggest thing right now, she's always had support, a support group. For everything that she's ever encountered, she's always had a support group. You're asking her to go to a school where she knows no one, no teachers, nothing. And that's not what we want for our kids, to have their feet knocked out from under them. So I ask you again, is it the well-being for numbers, or is it the well-being for the students? If it's the well-being for the students, she should be allowed to go there so she doesn't have to do all the medical issues that are in her path, as you can see. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could I have the Jefferson people, please, come up? If we can find them. No, 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 teacher, sorry. Luann, they're speaking.
Chair Bartolata, members of the School Board, Superintendent Fujitaki, Cabinet Members, members of the audience and viewing public. My name is Luann Spoelstra, and I'm a special education teacher at Jefferson High School. I work with students with developmentally cognitive delay. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of my special education colleagues at Jefferson and wish to share some perspective about how rightsizing the budget decisions have created unfortunate outcomes for several important elective courses at Jefferson High School. The lack of elective courses will most impact two groups of students: those that we teach that have special needs, and also the growing number of learners that benefit from curriculum that leads to jobs or careers not dependent upon the traditional college or university track. As educators, the development of human potential is our primary focus. This focus requires valuing any and all career education paths selected by our students. The career exploratory courses that have been eliminated in technical education, art, family and consumer science, so for example, we only have one-third of a full-time teacher next year. Physical education, they're all significant part of a non-university-bound student's track, and they need to be valued along with the core classes of English, social studies, science, and math. We educators also need to be zealous advocates for our most vulnerable populations that can participate only partially in the general education setting. So for example, many courses that the mild-to-moderate DCD students have have been lost to cuts. Some of these courses are FACS department, include independent living, personal development, and relationships. While some sections in the music department have been spared, the lack of options in appropriate electives will result in students being served in the DCD mild-moderate classroom for greater, if not all, periods of the school day. In my opinion, the lack of appropriate electives does not allow the students to attend school in the least restrictive environment and could be considered a violation of the Individual Education Disabilities Act, or IDEA. The IDEA states that a student with a disability should have the opportunity to be educated with non-disabled peers to the greatest extent appropriate. Clearly, the lack of electives is taking away opportunities for inclusion, resulting in a more restrictive learning environment. There are two possible solutions to remediate the situation. One solution is to retain more elective courses. A high school building with over 1,600 students should offer a wider array of course options and should have more access to FACS, tech ed, and art to accommodate the career exploratory needs of students with special needs. A comprehensive high school, our size, should have many pathways to graduation, not just one college prep path that for our students would be academically sterile and provide few functional learning opportunities for their lifetime, you know, and their needs. The second solution entails busing students to Kennedy to allow students to participate in the abundance of electives that remain open there for next school year. Creative use of transportation could be explored, such as combining runs to DCTC and/or the Career and College Academy. A special education staff member could be designated to travel with a group of students as needed. In short, we hope that a change in the number of available electives at Jefferson be pursued. Reinstating these missing educational opportunities will be a step in preparing all learners, including those that are not university-bound, to thrive in our rapidly changing world. So I thank you for your time.
Chair Bartolata, School Board Members, Les Superintendent Fujitaki, Cabinet Members, and listening audience. My name is Jessica Rice, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of 850 members of the Bloomington Federation of Teachers, some here and some who can't be with us here today. We stand here today, ready to negotiate. We are ready for a fair and efficient settlement. We are ready to negotiate a contract that continues to be able to recruit and maintain the best teachers for our Bloomington community. We are ready to negotiate our contract. Make no mistake, we understand that in tightening our belts with 15.5 fewer FTEs, which resulted in 20 fewer teachers, we know that we will be adequately and justly honored for such compromises with a fair and efficient settlement. Because the last round of bargaining proved to be terribly long, we are looking forward to a new way of bargaining with the district, one that is more transparent and productive while balancing the needs of the district, the teachers, and the students. We believe in the students of Bloomington to learn at high levels, and we trust that together we can do what is best for this community of learners, teachers and students alike. We know that the sooner we settle our contract, the better we can serve the students on those pathways to graduation. We are ready to negotiate a contract that expires in just 35 days. Our BFT members are looking forward to an equitable, respectful settlement that is comparable to districts in the metro area, one that honors the work that our members do day in and out. This document contains the signatures of BFT members and their intent to bargain. We are ready to negotiate. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all for addressing the board this evening. The board is also looking forward to contract negotiations and is optimistic that we'll be able to reach agreement in a timely manner. Please accept the board's sincere apology for any hardship the rightsizing the budget process has caused you, your teammates, your schools, and your programs. A number of factors, including the decreased enrollment and increased costs, have required cuts of $4 million for the 1516 school year in order to slow down the depletion of our fund balance. Even with these reductions, our fund balance will be spent down by $12 million by the end of the upcoming school year. Again, we regret the anxiety and the impact this has had on our employees, students, and families. We will keep you and the public informed as we work through this budget process together. Thank you. Next, I'd like to see if Teresa Hess is in the audience. She requested to speak to the board. Not seeing her, I'll invite Robert Petrie to come to the podium, please.
I am Robert Petrie, a junior at Jefferson High School.
I'm Renee Pebbles, a sophomore at Jefferson High School.
And we are here to try to convince the board to continue on with the French department. Due to a lack of students signing up, French classes 4, 5, and AP have been canceled for the 2015-2016 school year. Renee are here representing many of our classmates who are glad we could not attend tonight's meeting, but who all lend their support. We will be sharing facts, statistics, and other opinions in the hopes of swaying the decision.
As we upperclassmen and uppercoming upperclassmen go into our junior and senior year, we start the arduous process of college applications. Catherine Cohen, founder of Ivy Wise Admissions Consulting Company, says that the second-most surefire way to get colleges' attention is four years of a foreign language. Some schools, such as Boston College and Princeton, require at least four years of one language for all applicants. With the cancellation of the uppermost French classes, we are set at a disadvantage to our peers in the Spanish and Latin departments. We were told in 7th grade that we would be able to take five years of French, or of either French or Spanish, and we chose French. Once we got to high school, we were told we could choose from five languages. If a class was dropped, like Japanese, we had time to rearrange our schedules to still get four years, but at this point, we don't. The personal benefits of learning a second language in high school extend far beyond getting into college. According to jobs.org, speaking a foreign language increases one's chance of getting internships and high-ranking jobs. It is also stated that the bilingual individuals have almost doubled the chance of getting government jobs as opposed to their single-language-speaking counterparts. Thirty-one percent of CEOs worldwide are bilingual. The fourth-most common language among those individuals is French. Also, working individuals with bilingual backgrounds tend to make more money. French is the official language of over 50 countries, second only to English. It is the official language of the Olympics. It's the language of the most visited city of the world, Paris. With the rising popularity of international travel and communications, knowing a second language helps widen our horizons and create a better understanding of other cultures. Bloomington prides itself on being a diverse school district. We want to continue and make Bloomington even more worldly. Offering advanced classes in only Spanish and Latin, a dead language, limits the city's opportunities to make connections with schools in other countries. To make ourselves better global citizens, we need to continue higher levels of multiple
When we tried to talk to our administrators at our school, the reasons we were given that French was canceled was that there were not enough students who signed up. In a meeting with Mr. Hall, the Vice President of Jefferson, we were informed that to make an elective class official, there needs to be... an elective class official, there needs to be thirty-five to forty students who sign up. This is a rule that has been broken many times in our past. The current AP Spanish class only has twenty-five students, and the current AP French class has four students. The AP French class is a combined class in, with the French four students, and there are only six of us. I'm in French four. The, of the current French three students, seventeen of them would like to continue on to French four next year. This is double the amount of French four students who signed up for this year, this current school year. The other reason we were given was that Ms. Tracy decided, or Ms. Tracy, the French teacher, needed to take up another Spanish class due to the retirement of one of the other Spanish teachers. This is a problem that could be avoided by dispersing Spanish one students out among the other classes. Some possible solutions that we were given were that if we were unable to continue French at school, we could do at PSEO at Normandale. This is not a plausible option for all students if you cannot drive or fit it into their schedules. As far as we know, the only French classes are in the afternoon, which would conflict, or conflict with prior engagements. In the school district, if the school district would like it to be a viable option, we would like them to provide transportation and possibly work out an agreement with Normandale that would find a class period that would fit in with the general schedule. And we would also like them to be, hold an informational meeting, walking students through the application process of PSEO. Another option we were given was to take French online. It is an undisputed fact that the best way to learn a language is by immersion, an impossibility with an online class. Online classes also cost money for both the board and sometimes the students. Even if the school district paid for it, it would still not have the same educational level as learning in a class setting. We propose that the school district has one of the middle school teachers come over during the times when they are not teaching their two classes. The middle school teachers teach two periods of French one. If they helped by teaching some of the French one at the middle school, or at the high school, then Ms. Tracy could have an extra period to teach, teach a combined class of French four and French five. Another possible solution is that the Spanish one classes are dispersed amongst the other ones, increasing the other Spanish one class's sizes morally, but increasing our size exponentially, seeing as there is none right now. We understand that there are budgetary complications that go above our heads. We tried to do research into your budget and try to find if there was any plans, but we could not find a current budget online. French is more than just a class for us. It is a passion that we hold deep. Many of us have grand plans for international studies and global businesses. Nenu voulons qu'un autre éducation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one come forward, that will bring us to part A of the agenda. Would someone like to move part A?
Second.
Thank you. Part A includes our board business, personnel items, field trip approval, and contracts and agreements, and finance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, that brings us to part B, adoption of the health and physical education curriculum for grades six through twelve. Dr. Anderson and company. Oh, I believe that we do. Thank you.
Madam Chair, be resolved, the school board of independent school district two-seventy-one adopts the health and physical education curriculum for grades six through twelve effective the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year.
Second. Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, superintendents, cabinet members, those in attendance. Wonderful to be with you tonight, and I'm very pleased to introduce to you this evening the Health and Physical Education Steering Committee's curriculum revision work from the last two years. Now, over the last two years, this committee has assessed and revised the district's health and physical education curriculum for grades six through twelve, and this new curriculum incorporates national standards into a vertically articulated and well-balanced program. This curriculum has been reviewed and is supported by the district's Pathway Advisory Committee, secondary principals, the Office of Educational Equity, and indeed is recommended for adoption by the district's Health and Physical Education Committee members for grades six through twelve. Now, to talk more specifically about this revision and the work of this committee, it's my pleasure to welcome Marcy Koval, Secondary Curriculum Coordinator, Jennifer Burgland, a teacher from Oak Grove Middle School, and Erin Swartow, a teacher from Valley View Middle School, who worked with twelve other teacher leaders, colleagues, on this revision. You heard testimony from many of our newly minted leaders about the necessity to have teams work. The superintendent places a value on teamwork, and indeed, it takes a team of dedicated teacher leaders to revise a curriculum over two years in addition to their regular duties. So it's with gratitude that I introduce this team for their specific remarks this evening, and I specifically want to thank them for their efforts and contributions to this work. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Marcy and the team.
All right, thank you very much. As Tim said, I'm Marcy Koval, and this is Erin Swartow and Jennifer Burgland, and we're here to present the work of the entire middle school and high school PE and health departments, and what we've been doing over the last two years to revise the curriculum. And in Bloomington, and we prioritize our standards to create a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We look at state benchmarks and prioritize them into three levels, essential, important, and enhancing standards. We had health and physical education representatives. They reached a consensus on what standards they believed to be essential, important, and enhancing. When it says representatives, I will, would like to say that it was pretty much all the teachers that were part of this process that came to the meetings. We had large meetings, they were all very dedicated to what we were doing, and whenever a notice went out, I actually had teachers ask, can I come? So that's the kind of dedication that these teachers have shown over the last two years. So as you know, and I know you've heard from our department before, essential standards are those standards that are, have endurance. They are committed to teaching those standards in every course, and they are assessed at a district level so that every, like, sixth-grade FIAID student will have the same assessment, no matter which middle school they go to. The common district assessments are written by teachers, and they'll be written next year. Important standards are also vital, but they do not rise to the level of the essential standards, and those teachers are expected to teach, and they are done at a common level, so a building level. And enhancing standards are also important, but they are not the, as, as essential or as important as the other standards, but still, the intent is there that the matter is covered. This is the long list of teachers that participated in the process. It was a large group, but a great group, and we also were lucky to have a representative from Hennepin County come in and give us some insight from a county perspective. And so I'm going to turn it over to Erin, and he's going to talk about the health revision, and then Jennifer will address the PE revision.
So our secondary health vision statement is through health education, Bloomington Public Schools will provide all students with the knowledge, ethics, and skills to live a healthy lifestyle, to make healthy choices, and to respect themselves as well as others. As, for our health education standards, we reviewed Bloomington standards to ensure that they were in alignment with current national standards, and we researched local school districts and their health curriculum as well. We had the opportunity to work with Hennepin County, Lynn Brettle, in regards to standards. Teachers will incorporate portions of the National Sexuality Education Standards, NSES, with national health standards from the CDC to provide strong, viable curriculum to all students. I want to make a note that we're not changing any of our curriculum in health. We just found standards that met the curriculum that we were currently teaching.
So in physical education, Bloomington Public Schools will provide all students with a foundation for a lifetime of wellness, physical wellness, of value of physical fitness, knowledge, collaborative skills, and character development. So it's a little bit different, and we, I think why Marcy had so many teachers who were willing to help is because we really used this benchmark after seven years to kind of move away from all of our stand, skill-based standards and really move into more of lifetime wellness standards. So what we understand, it's still important to throw an opposition, for example, we really want kids to be able to dabble in things that they're going to be able to do for the rest of their lives. So all of our physical education standards align with AFORD, which is the national, they have set our national standards. And it was kind of fun because in my career of fourteen years, I've seen our state and our national standards disappear for health and FIAID, and now come back. So I'm happy, we're all happy to see that, that there's a refocus on the importance of, of health and, and physical lifetime wellness. So all of our standards, there are five of them, really speak to the physically literate individual. So a variety of motor skills, but as I mentioned before, enhancing a level of physical activity and fitness for, for a lifetime. So we have an emphasis on lifelong fitness, as I mentioned, and really incorporating technology, which has been fun because, you know, we wrote our curriculum seven years ago, and now, of course, you can imagine the technology that's available for physical fitness is incredible. We also continue to have a focus on nutrition, and then, most importantly, I think, is student ownership.
The next step is to choose materials that will help support the essential standards in the courses and help align the curriculum and the materials with the standards that they're teaching. This was a secondary, where the secondary teachers are at. There is a K-five update. Right now, K-five PE and health, teachers have formed collaborative teams. They have determined their essential standards for each grade level. Teachers have created learning targets, and their next steps will be creating proficiency scales for the selected learning targets that they've created. And the next steps for the secondary group will be in the fall to come back and write those essential assessments. And as you know, you have the standards documents that are there to review and look at. I would like to say, I know Tim mentioned, I have presented this to the principals, secondary principals, the Pathways Advisory Committee, and the Office of Educational Equity, and I also am a PAC member and a parent of kids that are in health and PE, so I've got a different, or different, my hands in different parts of this, and I just want to say what a great job these teachers have done, and I just think they've, I can't say enough good things about them. So that kind of wraps it up.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, just quickly, I don't want to forget my manners. I want to say thank you all for, for coming. Thanks, Marcy, Jennifer, Erin, Tim, of course. I looked at these documents, they're very comprehensive, and it's, it's amazing what you guys are doing, and just, I just want to say thanks for the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You had mentioned a couple of things. One was student ownership, assuming student ownership of the curriculum to some extent, and then not skills-based. I'm assuming that means like, it's not, can you hit the ball with a tennis racket? It's something else. Could you maybe elaborate on, on those two ideas?
Student ownership, we are really moving into, Oak Grove at least has really piloted a student choice program, so I always offer two choices, no matter what, what we're doing, it's, it's going to be two choices. It's really taken our nonparticipation rates, they're almost nonexistent, because the student is owning their choice, they're choosing what best fits their interest level and their activity level. And even if I had to offer, like, basketball, for example, if that was my only option, I would offer a competitive and a non-competitive area for basketball. So it really, you know, the complaining has gone down, and the standing around, and the please stand up, you've been sitting all day, this is your one chance to stand up for the day. It's just, it's gone, and, and that's been extremely rewarding for us and more so for, for the students. And then, second part of your question, remind me.
You had mentioned, and I forgot, I didn't write it down before you switched the slide, but you had mentioned something about it, it's not skills-based as much as it's...
Oh, right. Yeah, so, so while we still obviously feel skills are important, you know, we just aren't putting as much emphasis on, can you, can you effectively shoot a layup? Because not every kid is, A, going to be able to, or B, going to care if they do or not. So we really try and offer different, different life, lifelong activities. So an example of a unit is family reunion games. So we play bocce ball, we play ladder golf, we have an outdoor volleyball net, so we offer things that are, are going to be more lifelong, because the, the chances of a kid, like, being on a basketball team for the rest of their lives, as opposed to, you know, knowing how to have fun at a family reunion, for example, or stay active. So we're truly trying to weigh out the, the realistic options in, in today's middle-schooler. Does that help? There's a lot of words that I used.
It was sort of like the art curriculum where they said, well, it's not going to be so much now, well, how does, does your picture of a duck look like a duck? It's more like, well, how did you come about choosing the right materials and whatnot? It sounds like you're sort of...
Right.
Same thing, yeah. It's not, did you hit a home run? It's, do you know, can you have fun?
Exactly, exactly. Can you stay active in this amount of time? Can you be a great team member and a great citizen in this type of environment?
Thanks.
How does track and field fit into this, since they've just, all the middle schools, that's an elected afterwards extracurricular, so to speak? Or is that part of the...
Yeah, I, I coach, I coach track at Valley View. I'm assuming that we're keeping that around for a little while, I'm hoping that we're keeping that around. Just, just as far as the extracurricular, track and field, it's a pretty cheap, I think, after-school activity. There's not a whole lot of cost to it, there's not all the equipment costs of, of, of all the other sports, and I coach football at Jefferson, too, so I know that, I understand the, you know, the, the importance of the after-school activities. But as far as track and field, we do, in physical education, we do a track and field unit. I know at Valley View we do. In eighth grade, we do that just based on, on when we have FIAID. If I get FIAID in the spring, then I do a track and field unit. So they'll kind of go with whatever is the season.
Whatever the season is. Well, I mention that because all the track and field, having a grandson in one of the schools, having, going to the track and field meet. You know, there are some that are pretty good, and there are some that are trying very hard, and, and yet, it's part of a fitness program that I'm sure has been encouraged. But I don't know what the participation rate is for the extracurricular, but I mean, that's an added dimension to it, you know, as, and, as opposed to baseball, and as you mentioned, seasonal. You know, I don't think any, is golf taught, tennis, and some of those things, do they have curriculum?
We teach tennis. I know Valley View doesn't because they don't have any courts at Valley View, so...
We'll hear about that, I guess.
Yeah, I know. So it is a little bit dependent on what's available to us, too, but, yeah, definitely. Track is huge at Oak Grove. Every sixth grader's a sprinter, everyone.
And then a follow-up, so it's required six, seven, and eight? But then we get to the high school, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, and, and you have enough...
PE credit?
Right.
It's required nine, right?
Ninth and tenth are required for PE and health, it's tenth grade health.
I was going to mention for a future discussion, when we talk about student ownership, possible youth advisory committee, that might be a topic that we could bring up. We could talk about, you know, the options that they have, do they like the options? What options would you have if you could make up your own, stuff like that? I'm, I'm just sort of talking in general here, because our youth advisory council, we're always looking for, for, for discussions to, to have with the students, so I was just thinking, that might be one of them for a future discussion, so maybe we'll mark that down, and in August, we can discuss if that would be something that we'd want to...
We would love that. That, that's one of the things that we, now that we've been able to start to reflect on this choice here, we've thought, you know, maybe our tennis numbers were kind of low in that choice. Do we even want to offer tennis? So let's just give the kids a list of everything that we can offer, and then have them pick.
Perfect. When's the first meeting, not Goldberg? We'll put you on the agenda, all right?
That would be great. Honestly, I, that's the kind of feedback we need to, to keep this program relevant and, and successful, so that'd be great.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
We won't stock it with pro athletes.
No. No.
We'll try to get some that are con athletes.
Right, right. We'll get a good representation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution regarding placement of a teacher on unrequested...
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, gotta have that vote.
Should we, we are voting on the adoption of the Health and Physical Education Curriculum. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm sorry for jumping ahead. Next, we will have a resolution regarding placement of a teacher on unrequested leave of absence. And Mary Burrows is here and Director Bennett would like to read the resolution.
So, a resolution to place unrequested leave of absence, the teaching contract of a tenured teacher. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 Bloomington, Minnesota, adopted a resolution on April 27th, 2015, proposing to place Ms. Natasha Kellenberger, a tenured teacher in Independent School District Number 271, on unrequested leave of absence. And whereas Ms. Kellenberger received written notice of proposed placement of unrequested leave of absence by personal service and whereas written notice of proposed placement of unrequested leave of absence contained a statement setting forth the reasons of proposed placement as well as a statement that Ms. Kellenberger was entitled to a hearing before the school board. And whereas no written request for a hearing has been made and whereas said failure to make a written request for a hearing within 14, 14 days after receipt of her notice constitutes acquiescence of placement of unrequested leave of absence. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 as follows. One, that Natasha Kellenberger be hereby, be and hereby is placed on a .056 FTE unrequested leave of absence while retaining a .944 FTE for the reduction of her position as fax teacher without pay or fringe benefits effective at the end of the 2014-15 school year, June 30th, 2015 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A dot 40 and the unrequested leave of provisions as negotiated. Two, that the clerk of school board shall issue written notice to be sent to said teacher regarding displacement of unrequested leave of absence and said notice shall be essentially the following form. You are hereby notified that at a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 held of May 26, 2015, a resolution was adopted by the majority roll call vote of the full membership of the Bloomington, of the school board placing you on a .056 FTE of unrequested leave of absence as a teacher of Independent School District 271 effective at the end of the 2014-15 school year on June 30th, 2015 pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 122A dot 40 subsection 10A and section 10 of the current master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative without pay or fringe benefits.
Second.
Thank you. Mary's here, if we have any questions. Our Director of Human Resources.
Chair for LAAS Superintendent Buttaki and members of the board, this is just the second step of putting a tenured teacher on unrequested leave of absence. And so, it was started in April 27th. So, this is our second step in the process, so...
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, just, just for clarification, this, when we read this in the last meeting, this, it looks like it's just one class. It's, it's, does that sound right?
Yeah, it's like a section.
It's a fraction of a fraction, yeah.
Exactly.
So, this teacher isn't losing their job, it's just...
No, in fact, at .944, they're still retaining full benefits and, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, looks like it's one class.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Is, is that one full class? It seems to me like that'd be less than a class. I mean, how many minutes on a school day is that? Do you have any idea?
I can look. I'll get it back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who's good at math?
We have a calculator. What's, what's a full school day?
Eight hours, isn't it? Contract, seven, a half?
Come on, contract hours?
Who's a math teacher?
How many?
What's the question?
I, I thought they, how many can, how many hours are in a contract day, but...
Paid hours, uh...
If there was eight, it would be...
Seven point one two.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so...
Rixana.
Seven point one two. Multiplied by .056, you'd lose .39872 hours a day.
Yeah, right.
Twenty minutes?
And however much money that is.
I'd say twenty minutes.
All right, well, I guess the question I was asking was it, it's a small fraction of a day, it's not the whole...
It is.
Yeah.
So, are there any other questions? Any math problems? No? All in. Thank you. We'll start with Director Bergstrom.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And our third resolution of the evening is resolution to non-renew probationary teachers and licensed school nurse. Does anyone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair? All right. Just to make sure that I'm reading the right thing, do we, David, do we want just this bit or I can read the whole thing?
Read the whole thing, I do.
Yep, you know...
So, you want to start here and then...
My father would be proud of you to read the whole thing.
All right. And we'll start here. This is a resolution relating to the non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary teachers and licensed school nurse resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 271 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A point 40 that the teaching contract of the above-named probationary teachers and a licensed school nurse in Independent School District 271 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2014-2015 school year, June 30th, 2015, and is not renewed for the 2015-2016 school year. And be it resolved further that the clerk of the school board shall issue written notice to said teachers and licensed school nurse regarding non-renewal of the teachers' contracts as provided by law. And that said, notice shall be substantially the following form. Notice of termination. You are hereby notified that at a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 271 held May 26, 2015, a resolution was adopted by a majority roll call vote giving action that your contract will not be renewed effective at the end of the school year, June 30th, 2015, and is not renewed for the 2015-2016 school year. Said action of the, of the board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A point 40. You may officially request that the school board give its reasons for the non-renewal of your teaching contract. However, such request must be received within 10 days after the receipt of this notice. And then there's an attachment of the... All right, do you want this in here as well? All right, I get to read some more. I move the approval of separate resolutions to non-renew the following probationary teachers and licensed school nurse. Jennifer Atterbury, Thomas Rieger, Wendy Sandstrom. Let's see if we have anything left to read in here.
I believe not. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mary, do you want to address this?
This just continues our non-renewals that we've had this year. A couple, I want to say at least one of them, we missed the notification last time, so we're putting it on this time. So, it would have been normally included in the other group, but hopefully this, I hope this is the last round that I'll have to bring forward, but as numbers change and enrollment changes, some things get changed, so...
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, I'll, we'll start with Don.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you. That brings us to our board member reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
Attended Memorial Day Parade, that was fun. Mr. Director Storm here had his fancy convertible driving us around.
Fun for some, huh?
Yeah, Don, Rex Scott Stagoff and Dick Bergstrom are also there. Tom was there walking, I believe, with a different group with the...
Probably child.
But he'll, he may have mentioned that. Now, it's a lot of fun to have the opportunity. I went on a field trip with Ridgeview Elementary and it was a great field trip, but that wasn't what I wanted to mention. I started talking to the bus driver about all the cameras on the bus and, and I said, you know, with the stop arm cameras, I said, do you feel like it's been effective? And he said, well, because it doesn't happen very often, because I know at the bus stop across where my kids are at the end of the block, I would see cars once a week, they'll go through the stop arms. And he said, yeah, it's in the hundreds of violations that we get a year. And I said, well, do they do anything about it? And he said, well, a lot of the bus drivers fear retaliation from drivers, from reporting them, so a lot of times they don't get reported. And so, I wanted to bring that up and mention that it's something we maybe should look at to see about paperwork and, and he said, you know, like if, if, if the person contests it, now the bus driver has to go testify and they really don't want to do that. And so, we maybe need to work with the city or local law enforcement to see if there's any other things that we could do to address that issue. Also attended the ECFE picnic at Moyer Park, that was a lot of fun. I missed the regular meeting because I had the wrong date on the calendar, once again, so I apologize profusely. They nominate, or they elected their, their officials for next year, their chair and vice chair and secretary and I missed that meeting, but the picnic at Moyer Park was a lot of fun. It was the first time I attended it. I didn't know it existed until this year and hope to go to it next year for sure because I have a little three-year-old that would probably be in some ECFE classes. That concludes, goodbye.
Thank you. Who's next?
All right, I, I also, I actually attended the Parent Advisory Council meeting and I, that one I did pencil in correctly, I, I used a pen. And they did elect their, their, their board. The president is Andrea Vocal and I believe Carla Reese are going to like be co-presidents. Vice President, Treasurers, Carissa Medworks-Wall. Secretary is Christina Mock. Communications Chair is Tana Hayek. Fundraising Chair is Krista Olive and Outreach Advocacy Chair is Jean Johnson. It was a lot of fun at that particular meeting. Also attended a PTA meeting over at Olson Elementary. They're currently looking for quite a few people to help chair events coming up in the fall, starting in the fall. So, if you're watching this at home and you're interested, a parent that's interested in, in helping out with Olson Elementary, I'm sure they'll take an hour, a half hour. If you want to do some work from home, I'm sure you can just get, get ahold of the PTA chair there, look up their name online and, and they'll get you slotted in. Also had the opportunity to attend the end of the year picnic for the ECFE, the Parent Advisory Council over at Moyer Park. And as soon as I got there, I was, had my arm twisted and I was a face painter for hour and a half. And it was a lot of fun and I didn't see any of the kids that, that I was doing the artwork on, they weren't running away screaming and hollering, so when they looked in the mirror, they smiled, although some of my basketballs look like kind of squished footballs and maybe I won't do the face painting, just the arm. Attended the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, it was the legislative wrap-up. They had Senator Franzen and Wicklund there and all of our representatives were there, Paul Rosenthal, Linda Solcom and Anne Lucheski. That was a really interesting conversation to hear how that, this particular session went or how it didn't go because it's sort of to be continued, so keep your ears tuned to the radio. Attended a safety training seminar right here in, in the Harleen Bush Boardroom, given by Rick Kaufman. It was really interesting. There were topics such as evacuation, lockdown, shelter in place, severe weather and then hold in place and then the individual definitions for those. And that was staff training, that's sort of an ongoing thing. Attended a presentation at the Bloomington Civic Plaza. It was titled "Mr. Civil Rights" about the life of Thurgood, Thurgood Marshall in the NAACP. We saw about an hour-long film and then there was some really good conversation afterwards. And I know, Marina, I saw you there and Don was there and Jim was there. It was, it's, you know, it's, it's really, it's beneficial for us to get out and, and listen to this kind of stuff and listen to community conversation and that was a wonderful opportunity for that. As Rick had mentioned, we, we were able to walk in the Memorial Day Parade and the rain held off just in time, so nobody really got wet. It rained overnight and it stopped for the parade and then it, I think it might have rained a little bit afterwards. Also had an opportunity to attend and, and partake in, in the mock interviews over at Kennedy High School just Friday or just a couple of days ago. And this was sponsored by the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and, and there were, I'm going to say 15 other people from businesses around Bloomington. And I just want to say thank you to the business community for stepping up and stepping in and helping out all these students. The kids came, they gave us resumes and then they, they filled out a, a mock job application and they presented to us and we listened and then we had about 15, 20 minutes just to give them feedback, which I don't think you would normally get at a job interview because if people are interviewing for jobs, it may be 15 or 20 people. And unfortunately, you don't have time for that, that immediate feedback. And that's what these students, I, I think, benefit the most from. So, it was really nice to see our business community come out and step up and, and help these young, young learners. That, that does it for me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don?
Well, I had a chance to attend Jefferson's award ceremony in a little while this evening before we came to school board, Kennedy's Evening Excellence. Both events are honoring the seniors that are graduating that are in the top 10% or the ones that are National Honor Society and then scholarships, et cetera, handed out, both great events. I also attended the Early Childhood Parent Advisory picnic and, and they had a great turnout. We have a lot of future students there, there are so many kids. I especially had to laugh at the fact that the volleyball net there was turned into the biggest sandbox ever under this volleyball net. So, so it was just great fun, great turnout. As has been mentioned, the parade was, it was really nice that they asked the school board to participate in the parade this year. I thought that was great and it was fun to see, you know, a lot of our students lined up, parents lined up and my neighbors, et cetera, all lined up out there, so it was a great experience. I also had a little chance to do some classroom visits at both Pond and Oak Grove, you know, trying to get there before the, at last of the year, before the classrooms are done for the summer. And I also attended, Valley View Elementary had, I think it was their first ever international night and it was just a wonderful event for the first time. There were booths from all different countries up and down, three different hallways. It was a chance for families to come and talk about maybe some of their culture and some of their family. It was also a chance for many of the staff to have booths about their family and their culture and it was really well-attended. There were, you know, there was also food from some of the different restaurants there. It was just a really great event. I thought, what a great opportunity to learn. I cannot say enough of how well it was supported by their teachers and their staff that showed up on a Friday evening to be part of that event. So, it was just a great event. Thank you to the teachers and all the people that put the work into it. I was not part of it, I just got to go to the great events. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Director Shonar?
Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of things on it, other than saying ditto, 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 ditto. The, we want to thank Deb Bonkold and her husband Claire for making sure that the school board was represented at the Memorial Day Parade and talking to a variety of the veterans that were there, the, from the Legion and the VFW. They thought it was a great opportunity, too. In fact, as Don was sitting in the car, we tried to get her to sit up on the back so that she could wave, you know, from the little car. I think somebody had said that she was, they were really glad to see us out in public. Wasn't that it?
We did hear a few... Yeah, I think we did hear, we did hear a few comments.
But anyhow, just to be able to be part of that program and, uh, and share along with the veterans and, and other organizations that did it. So that was that part. Um, I do have a subcommittee report, uh, on the superintendent evaluations. All evaluations were turned in. The, the subcommittee met and tabulated and, uh, the results. And, um, these will be shared at our closed session on June eighth, so I guess at this time I'd ask for a motion to have a subcommittee or committee of the whole close session, um, on June eighth at six o'clock.
You can make that one.
Make that motion.
Someone like to second it?
Second.
All in favor of a closed session at six PM on June eighth?
June eighth.
Please signify by saying aye.
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 And, um...
None opposed?
We've gone through that before, uh, with the closed session is like this. So we'll just be taking care of that at that time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I need to add something on mine. I think, you know, in another life, I must have had a great memory, because it's no longer with me. I did attend the Olson Middle School Student Awards Program. Uh, they do recognize the top ten percent and the top twenty percent with, I believe, their gold and silver awards. But that's not the majority of the event. The majority of the event is act, is, is recognizing individuals in, in, in each academic area, including art, math team, media center, volleyball theaters, uh, theater, and the dinner theater program. So all the different programs that they have at the school, they recognize individuals. And they don't recognize them just for, uh, achievement or their grade that they got in that class. Most of the time, what you're hearing is the leadership qualities that student had. There's one student where I believe she got awards in three different areas, plus she got the gold award. But it was always, this student, if I had a substitute teacher in my class that day, I'll tell the sub, just talk to her, because she knows how the class is run. She knows how to do everything. She knows where everything is. She'll be able to help you. And anytime, any student in the class had a question, she would be there to help them. And so, when I was talking earlier about the Youth Advisory Council and the VFO Drive, to me, yes, your grades and if you get all straight A's all through school, that's wonderful, but it doesn't mean you're a good person. And I think what we were doing is we were recognizing our students for, for being good people. In addition to their academic achievement, which I, I personally believe is just as, if not more, important. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and mention, um, what a great job Olson is doing acknowledging their students for things other than just their test scores.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just briefly, I mean, I pretty much ditto on a lot of the things that people said, so I don't need to go over all that. I just wanted to elaborate on the, the, um, the parade yesterday. I felt that the, uh, the school board float on, on Jim's car was well-represented. So I, I went ahead and took the opportunity to walk with, uh, Early Childhood, because I walk with them every year. And I wanted to, uh, thank Councilman Dwayne Lowman for walking with Early Childhood for the second year in a row. It's good, it's great to have a, an advocate, early ed advocate on, on our council. And he's also looking forward to walking with us in the, uh, in Heritage Days. He was wanting to know if we're gonna do that again, if we're gonna walk together in Heritage Days and possibly even next year in the Memorial Day, the school board and, and city council walking together. So that's, might be something we can talk about throughout the next year.
It'll be a challenge, yeah, for them to participate too.
To keep up with us, or what do you mean? We can all get, we can all fit in your car.
The mayor has a limousine, so that's probably gonna be the car of the day.
And then also today, I was able to attend the retirement party for Principal Paul Shula over at, uh, Hillcrest. And, you know, all you need to know about Paul is to see how much those kids and parents and staff absolutely love him. He's done a tremendous job over there and he's gonna be really missed over there. And I wish him nothing but, you know, luck and happiness in his future. And thank him for all of his years of service. And that's it.
Thank you.
I'm the last one, I guess. Well, last week I attended, um, um, Hillcrest Community School Fifth Grade Festival and Band Concert. And, uh, just want to highlight the great job our music teachers do, you know, year after year. It's just wonderful. Every single one of those shows and festivals is always very well-organized and it's just, uh, they, they do a, a great job. And then I also attended the talent show, also at Hillcrest Elementary. Lots of very talented kids, you know, at both events. And this morning I went to Oak Grove Elementary to attend the student award ceremony, where students were recognized for their perfect attendance, their, well, good behavior. And, uh, some of the students also got the superintendent's awards for academic achievement and efforts. And, um, yeah, I just want to say thank you to all of our staff members, teachers, and administrators that make all those things possible for our students to succeed. I did miss the, the parade, because unfortunately I was really sick, so while you were all having fun and walking and, you know, enjoying the nice weather, I was lying in bed, just feeling miserable. So next year, I'll join you.
Thank you. I did almost everything, well, at least somebody's, uh, mentioned here, so I will not reiterate that. I will do one housekeeping, um, question, is we need to discuss carpooling for graduation. So let's, uh, think about that and either talk about it after the meeting or I email this week.
I nominate that Director Oliva Drives again.
We can discuss, we can discuss that later, but... Alright, thank you for that, and I will turn over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Celebration service is gonna be this Thursday, May twenty-eighth. It's when the school board hosts a reception and award ceremony for staff members with ten or more years of service who are retired or will leave this school district, who have left the school district this past year, or plan to do so this spring. And the reception will begin at five forty-five in Oak Grove Middle School Caf, Lunchroom. And the award ceremony will follow at six thirty PM in Oak Grove Middle School Auditorium. Alright? Graduation this year will be held on the same day, June first, for high schools. Kennedy will, graduation will begin at five PM. And the Jefferson graduation will begin at eight PM. Both ceremonies will be held at the Mariucci Arena on the University of Minnesota campus. The Metro South Adult Basic Education graduation is June eleventh at seven thirty PM at Olson Middle School. And the last day for students for K twelve, K eleven is June third, that's Wednesday. The last day for seniors is May twenty-eighth, Thursday. And since it's the last board session before the end of school, sure, we'll, the entire board wish everyone a great and safe and relaxing summer. And we want to thank the staff, students, and parents for making fourteen, fifteen a great school year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.